It's not a good thing.
So we're going to call them next in the order, uh, everyone and everybody. I want to start with the.
I pledge allegiance to the title of the United States of America and to the republic where we should stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is tradition statement.
Okay. Mission statement, Lakeland Joint School District's daily mission is to maximize student learning and ensure every student is growing academically, socially, emotionally, and behaviorally every day in all environments.
Next is patient input. I don't believe we have any.
We did not.
Yep. We're on to the action items. Uh, we have the consent agenda with the minutes of the previous meeting until October 15th. And then the HR items. And then we have to amend the nice agenda so we can't really do it on the block. So. I do have a question on the HR, uh, Emma, okay, um, the guest teachers. We have a number, uh, several. Can you kind of explain to me about that?
Sure.
Okay.
So, um, we have guest teachers open online throughout the entire year, year round. Um, all, all districts that you talk to are, have a shortage of guest teachers.
That's like a substitute.
Yeah, we, a couple of years ago, we renamed them guest teachers because we did some training with them and they felt like substitute didn't really like give the value to them that they're actually like in teaching.
Right.
So we changed the name to guest teacher.
Okay.
And then we did a lot of training on the emergency plan, how to teach math in small groups, how to teach E L A. Like we did a ton of professional development with them and we included them in every district meeting and the P D days we had and everything.
Okay.
Um, and so we just have it open and then as soon as people are interested, we especially are trying to build up the bank right now.
Right.
Because we don't know what's going to happen with this.
Right.
We're, we're asked. Right.
Um, now the music teacher at Lakeland Elementary, was this the music teachers last year?
Yes.
So she's not coming back as a music teacher?
Uh, um. Well, no, but it's nothing, um, it's, I don't want to say. Yeah, it's, well, it's family stuff, but she's happy and she's coming back and she just wants to be a book doctor in person. And so she wants to.
I just didn't know if by chance the music program was, was the downside is due to the COVID issue.
Uh, no, it was, we did change the music program, remember at every elementary school where it's halftime and they're doing other things helping halftime sometimes at another school and Lindsay Hudson is helping.
Right, right.
Halftime of garbage, but, um, Britton is still in the area and she's.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay.
So can I motion to, um, approve the minutes of the previous meeting and the H R?
I'm making a motion to approve the minutes of the previous evening.
A motion, second, everyone, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? And then motion carry. Next is for men, let's agenda to add item G two. Um, approve, uh, or deny Lakeland Joint School District number two seventy resolution July twenty 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 in response to the COVID nineteen emergency. Do you want to explain that now or in the action?
Um, I'll make a motion that we deny to amend the agenda for the Lakeland Joint School District number two seventy-two resolution in July twenty eight, twenty twenty in response to the COVID nineteen emergency.
Second, yeah. There's a motion, second, everyone, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? May. Didn't see. I didn't see.
Motion carried.
Okay, motion carried. So we will not be amending the nice agenda. Okay, on to staff report, Moody's credit, yeah? Mr. Wallace can help us now read that.
So, um, before we start, yeah, terminal, so we, um, I sent the board the update to our credit rating. Uh, Mr. Wallace is going to explain it, see if he can do a better job of that. Um, but I want to say that it is really good news and we were super excited, um, with the report. We, uh, were online with the, uh, team leader and did a lot of input. Um, we did some written input and then we did some verbal input over what's happened over the last couple of years because they only do this every two years. And so I just want to say, just to, this has been, this is one of the most exciting times that Mr. Wallace and I have when this came back. So I'll let him explain it because he's, uh, this is up his alley, but it's very good news.
Yeah, it's awesome. It's like bells whistling.
Yes.
All kinds of confetti.
Right, that's exactly what I was trying to say, but I didn't want to take away his pleasure, but it's super exciting.
Madam Chair, remember the board, Dr. Meyer. So, you know, I'll just explain the process. So, you know, Moody's looks at the rating agencies. If you have outstanding debt, he's about every other year they look to rate. So the reason it came up is just because it was that time. The other time they also look at rating is if we had passed, let's say you pass a bond, they will definitely rate you if you're going to go sell bonds, even if you had the rating a year ago, they're going to look update because they're actually, because they're on the market, the bonds. Um, but the process is once they do that is they ask if you're doing some financial information, they look at your audit of financial statements. Obviously don't have for this year, uh, because it was, well, come October. Um, they look at the past trends and then they schedule a time to just sort of have a conversation. It takes about an hour. And yeah, in this time, it was with myself and Dr. Meyer. Sometimes you could have, uh, you know, some of our financial advisors, um, that have helped us with, even if it's a finance here from Eric Henry or Piper Jackery, or if we're using some of them, but we felt that he didn't need to be on, on the call. He was willing to be there. And so you have a call, they sort of talk about, so why, it's interesting is that because the conversation flows, because sometimes it's, we started talking about food service and he had questions, just how exactly, anyway. But, you know, they look at obviously the numbers and they ask us sort of where we believe we're going, we're going to end up this year and how we budget for next year, how we think the state budget impacts are going to, you know, impact us for the future. Um, even adding to, you know, care's money, how we're using that, and we explained, well, we haven't used anything yet, or sort of say that as those needs come up, we're trying to have that as, we didn't need to use it this year, so let's use it because we have two years to use it. And, and so that, it was a good conversation and, um, once you have the sort of lead of this process and Moody's gathered information, there's actually a committee. The committee looks at all the factors, and others who give the ratings, so he could not guarantee us. He said, maybe we'll just do a favorable upgrade, maybe it'll be one stage. This is actually a three-step upgrade from what we were.
Yes, it's awesome.
It's really big.
Way to go.
So A one for a lot of the title of school districts will never get there because they don't know their tax base. Part of it's also based on our economy and country challenge. So that's really good. Um, the other thing that we could actually maybe even get higher than they, you might have seen on the very part, um, is one thing they're saying is credit challenges is they, they called it a lack of segregation between the general fund and the debt service fund. What they really mean that is that we have our money in two places. We have Wells Fargo and also the local government investment pool. You know, so for short-term investments, we don't just keep it in Wells Fargo. We do this at the state and only need to draw that for payroll. We every month we bring some over. Um, because we get a little bit of interest there, right, at the investment pool. But really for a plant fund or general fund that our internal accounting separates those dollars, but the dollars are physically sitting in like the L G A. So what Moody's would like to see is that, let's say we actually put the debt service dollars, for example, in, uh, a separate bank. So instead of Wells Fargo, you do it at Panhandle. Literally, uh, so that there's never any question that you're using debt service funds thus to support the general fund. Because you, when we sell bonds, we say we're not going to do that. And we haven't, but there are some cash flow issues and things like that. So that, they'd like to see that. When I worked at Cora Lane, we actually did do that because we had new bonds coming on. Here was our bonds laying down. Uh, I mean, I, I knew they would say that, but we only have a few more years instead of a whole bank account that's just going to go away in a couple of years. It's a lot. I just didn't do that. And with our bridge fund bonds were fine, but it definitely, when we pass a bond in the future, we would probably do that and all the tax proceeds go into this separate account. So it's disallocated. And that was my opinion, this is just a practice to the people that can see that. So otherwise, the report, if you have any questions on it, it's sort of self-explanatory, but it is good news and you know, in a way, it's sort of like our credit report from your individual and, you know, we went down from being lower, so we're probably over eight hundred now, so that's good.
Well, not only that, just if, I can, you correct me if I'm wrong, but they also take into atmosphere of the state and how they could possibly be affected. But so for them to look at Lakeland and sort of see them as this little shining star in the midst of everything that's happening there. It's awesome. I mean, it really says a lot about the district being so related since you're talking about the rating.
Yes.
No, it's really good news and, and you're right. So if we could get, there's, you know, a lot of things, there's factors that could make our rating go up and down. We can't control. So if the overall state economy went down and the state, at the state level, there was a blast education funding, our rating could go down despite all our efforts because those are some factors we can't control, but.
But the effort's shine.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
What we can't control, I think we're giving it to them.
It's really good news. So I'm just curious, is there first policy procedures with regard to the accounts that are like you were saying, we could possibly do this? Is there anything that's mandating we do it this way or we do it that way?
No.
Or just, we just do it the way we do it?
Right. I mean, our policies, you know, definitely, um, I have to look at our specific bond policy. I don't believe that we have to decide or anything. It says we have to account for them separately, which we do following I F R M's accounting way, uh, the state asks us to. And, you know, of course, our auditors, you know, look at this fund every year to make sure that our cash flow is sufficient to make the payment. But we just made our, our interest-only payments are right now. Just happened in August. Um, they actually just fired her because I mean, I was. It's a fire, but.
Right, it's a short town.
I know. Boogies.
They're going to get this one. I think we're.
But yeah, so, um, but I, yeah, it's not, I don't think it's a policy.
Okay.
But I think it'd be a good practice and that's, you know, the same advice is given to, you know, Cora Lane. They have a really high rating. Part of that is because the tax base is so big.
Right.
Um, you know, we consider Cora Lane as pretty healthy, right? And, and our growth and our, you know, all the growth that Lakeland is seeing definitely helps with this rating because there's, they, they want to see a, a vibrant, growing community.
Right. And if we sell bonds, people investing want those interest rates, you know?
Yeah, we'll definitely get a better interest rate for this rate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Perfect. Maybe that's a win for more people are apt, those that invest in such municipal bonds are more apt to buy it. Yeah, that's just, it's a very good, good job.
Well, if we got good news occasion.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Just, I know we're six feet apart, but I'm bringing this just in case to show that I'm modeling. When we do get within six feet, that's modeling the law. Um, okay. Liz, I would like to, um, there's going to be a lot to talk about. But what I would like to do is just, um, really tell you what questions I think you can focus on and then go through the plan and then there may be additional questions that you have or other areas that you all want to focus on. But just in going through it with people, uh, I just want to remind us, our mission is still our mission. Uh, we talked about this in all the groups. It sometimes gets blurred and we're like, oh, we're online and blended and then, you know, what's good for staff, what's good for students, what's good for parents, the community? And sometime, I just always want to remind us, still is our mission in the district is always every single student, every single day needs to be learning and growing. So I just like to put that in there. This was just a reminder of our timeline that we told the public that we, uh, that the board had agreed to last time. So tonight it says, and again, this is up to you folks. It doesn't mean it's set in stone. This is just what we last, uh, relayed to the public that we were going to try to have the board finalize the reopening plan tonight. I was going to publish and share out the approved plan tomorrow with all families. I just got another new email as I was sitting here. Um, just two minutes ago saying, hey, when's this coming out? We're waiting. So I have been getting quite a few inquiries about that. Wanting to remain flexible because as you know, things are changing daily. Um, and then I would like to be able to have the board relook at August eleventh at that board meeting and relook again. Um, again, August twenty fourth, fifth, if we need to on that board and then meeting and then the calendar will begin after that. So as we go through the plan, this is really the decision points that I think are important. You might have additional ones. Looking at the stages we have, the green, yellow, orange, and red, and are you in agreement with those stages and the pieces underneath that? Um, parameters, I think one of the biggest things that we felt that we heard back were, um, the, the face coverings, the masks. I know that there is a mandate in Kootenai County, which all of our schools are in right now, but one thing I would really be, um, looking for board feedback on is if the face covering mandate is lifted, are we in agreement with the green, yellow, orange, and red of what we've put, put down in looking at staff feedback and parent feedback and then your, uh, feedback. So that's one thing I feel like we need to talk about. Uh, Mr. Wallace would like to talk about facility use because we have internal and external facility, facility use. And something he's been wanting to talk to the board about is if we are not allowing our groups to use them, are we still going to let outside, uh, organizations use them if they sign a waiver? So that's something Mr. Wallace will be talking, wants to talk about. We have the extracurricular activities, the I H S A A came out. Certified employees. I have had a few requests. Uh, if people don't feel confident coming back, um, I know I D L A, I think of Digital Learning Academy is looking for online teachers right now. Would the board support releasing contracts if an employee requests, like I don't feel confident coming back, I want to do some sort of online teaching, would they, uh, would the board support? And I know it's an individual case by case basis, but I think it bakes discussion so that certified employees at least know if the board is willing to entertain releasing them from their contract. And then any questions, suggestions, or concerns that you may have. Okay, so those, you might have additional points, but those are the initial pieces, I think, that we need to talk about. So. Um, let me see, is this big enough? Folks, probably I have the worst eyes of them right now, so. Okay. So let's start here. Let me grab as much space as I can. So the introduction, anybody, I'm, I'm just going to go piece by piece, if that's okay?
Yeah.
Any, um, thing that you would like to change in the introduction? Where are you? And then our mission remains, our mission we just talked about. So the levels of operation. And we have green and I'm just going to make it yellow, orange, and red. Um, we'll go through those each individually, I think. I just want to point out this part. We recognize anything less than in-person instruction. Every day is a hardship for families and there's no perfect blended learning schedule. I think it's important, and we read through the, uh, parent feedback. I felt like it was really important to say, really, we, we realize and we acknowledge that being face-to-face with our teachers, with our students is the best we can do. Unfortunately, there's, and it's creating some hardship for families and there's not a perfect solution. But I really wanted to let folks know that we're using the back-to-school framework um, by the State Board of Education, our Panhandle Health District mandates, any state mandates that may come. And then along with using both of the feedback from parents and from our staff, um, along with the Advent team, the association, and all the feedback we have. We developed these plans and protocols based on what we believe is best for students. This is a draft. As soon as you folks all give input and discuss it, then hopefully we'll, we can finalize it to send it out. Um, each principal, this is the umbrella for the district. Each principal is also creating, um, taking this and then adding in specifics, like, I'll give you just one example. We talked about Spirit Lake Elementary's, um, classrooms each have an external door to go out to the playground. That isn't the case at Betty Keifer. So, you know, what might be differed, different protocols at each school might be a little different. So they'll do school specifics that will be going out to their parents as well before school starts. And they're working on those now. Okay. So, uh, if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to just discuss each level or, because I think it might be too much to go through the whole thing and come back, but I'm actually happy to. Which way would you prefer?
I think.
Each one, okay. Uh, okay, is that okay?
Yep.
So green, um, is traditional and I should preface this by saying the Panhandle Health District has read through this and approved our plan. By law, they don't need to approve our plan, but we are running it through them. They have a liaison and we're running it through them just to make sure it aligns with any mandates they may have or anything that they may, uh, think is important from the C D C or Panhandle Health District guidance. So this is the definition. There's no community spread. We are right now, today, if our district was to be, uh, leveled, it would be on yellow. Today, our district would be a yellow. So I just talked to them a, a couple hours ago.
Why would our district be a yellow, Doctor?
Um, because of the transmission level and the number of cases. And so they would, there, where they would put us would be at yellow. Yeah. Um, which is where I guess we would be at, um, just knowing that we've had a few cases, but we're not at the same level as like other school districts. So this would be, uh, our lever of operation would be level of operation, five days a week, normal schedule. And then we would use reasonable protocols, sanitation, extra sanitation, cleanly, uh, procedures, full-time online was going to be available for all students. Our practices would be encouraging parents, plan for vulnerable set staff, social distancing to the greatest extent possible, explicitly teach and reinforce social distancing, hand hygiene, mask etiquette, coughing and sneezing, etiquette into the arm, stigma issues, hand sanitizers, um, are going to be here next week for every classroom. Big bulk and then pumps in each one. And then we also have additional masks, uh, in each areas as well. So this is really, we're trying to limit and having arranged to allow for cohort groups. We're doing our best to avoid, but we're not insisting on it, okay? Face coverings will be encouraged, but not required, um, unless mandated. So you'll see in each level, even though right now there is mask mandate or face covering mandate for Kootenai County. I, and again, the board makes you to word this differently, which I'm totally fine with. What I feel is important is that the board determines where they would like the mask and social distancing at the green, yellow, orange, and red, so that if the mandate was to come off, where would the board agree that it should be in those core levels? Um, we can certainly change the wording, but, uh, what I wrote in each of these levels was what I thought based on the feedback would be at each level, but then I would, I also wrote, but not require, I said, unless otherwise mandated by the local health district governor's order to account for what we have now. But we can certainly look at that.
Doctor, yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, good.
Um, but I'm scrolling back up to the desks, arrange to allow for cohort groups, limited classroom activities that don't allow for six feet or distances between students. It was my recollection that previously stated that our classrooms, um, are able to do twenty-four students at six feet, all of our classrooms. Is that accurate?
Well, I shouldn't say every single classroom because some classrooms have things on the side that maybe aren't as able to be moved. Um, each principal after our meeting last week was going to go back and look at their schools, every individual classroom and figure out how many desks they can get in along with the teacher in front. So, um, we have a classroom calculator, room calculator you can put in, and then depending if there's bookshelves, if there's, you've been teaching a lot of years and you have supplies and that goes somewhere else. So we're still working on that.
Um, the intention is to have desks six feet apart universally to get every classroom.
And so where the students sitting at the desk would be six feet to the next one. So from the edge of the desk, the edge of the desk is not six feet. From the student sitting in the middle of the student desk to the next student desk is six feet.
Okay. So the desks are not six feet apart.
Exactly.
It's humans.
Humans.
Yep.
Yep. And the other piece is, we do know, luckily, we do not throw things away in this district, which is true, true enough to be a good thing because um, the way people are wanting to teach now are a lot of tables, um, and they do think pair share group learning, which is not allowed to know in this social distancing. So luckily, um, we have a lot of student desks over here in storage, a lot of them. So there is going to have to be some swapping out of that because the guidance from the Health District is for student desks individually and students facing forward, not on opposite sides of tables like this. So. Um, there, there have been, um, not officially, but I don't know if we need to spend a lot of time on green, not, not because I don't want to be in green, but because a lot of folks who know more about this and I do are saying the chances of getting to green in this school year are not as high as they'd like them. So not that I don't want to all be on the same page, um, but I think that I want to definitely move on to yellow. I just would note here in green, it says will be encouraged, but not required, is the part in the green. And again, this board may choose to change that wording. I'm just going off what the feedback. Um, I know you've all seen the parent and staff feedback, but I would like to say, would your student wear masks? Thirty-three point four three percent of parents said yes. Not, they would not wear a mask was forty-six point six percent of parents. Undecided was nineteen point ninety-one. So it felt pretty strong to me, stat. And there was two thousand in case people on the meeting don't know this. The highest response rate we've ever had. I mean, it's unbelievable. Two thousand seven hundred and ninety-seven. So basically twenty-eight hundred parents responded to this. Um, the staff, there was four hundred and thirty-nine staff. Would, would you wear a mask was fifty-one percent? Not wear a mask was, prefer not to wear a mask was thirty-nine point eight six. And undecided was nine point one. So a little bit of a swap over flip on that, okay? All right, um, I'm going to go down to the yellow, uh, the rest, it'll be the same as the yellow. So if you don't mind, we'll go to the yellow. Because we're in yellow right now, I kind of want to talk about this piece right now. And again, this is just a draft. One thing that we think is really important is that we really took off and built the airplane while in flight last spring with the blended learning and learning from online, how did that work and giving feedback, how much was too much, how much do we give for homework, how did we do grading, passes were acceptable. So one thing that we feel is really important for staff is that they have some time to do, do some professional development, capacity build, that they're really learning their trade of how to be an online teacher and an in-person teacher and how to do the blended learning and mix that. It's not something that you just snap your fingers and it happens over overnight. And it really, you know, staff was, did an excellent, amazing job, but they were thrown right into that. And what we'd like to do is build in a day for them to be able to do, uh, off learning, practice the blended learning, practice their filming, upload their lessons, plan for their lessons. It's almost as if we're putting all of their preps into the Monday. And the reason we picked Monday is because there's more Monday holidays. So for folks, it was actually based on a parent, we'd had Wednesday off for, for two, two days, two days, and Wednesday was going to be off. But a parent comment that I read said, it would just be a lot easier if you didn't have that in the middle of the week and you have the Mondays, there's so many holidays and then you didn't have to switch the schedule. We had to go, wait, this speaker, we Tuesday, Friday, and it was just the whole rest of the year. We could do Tuesday through Friday. We could do Tuesday through Friday. And all of those in the quarter days that were on the Friday could be switched to the Monday. So every family would have Tuesday, Friday consistently the whole year. It would be, I think it'd be better for families to have consistency after everything we've lived through. So that's the, the piece. The school day would be the length that it is and the way that we can do social distancing in the secondary classrooms and in elementary, but is to have in secondary, do you know how they normally teach five out of the six periods? So they have a prep, so the class sizes are bigger, because there's preps for teachers throughout. So one way to decrease class sizes, seventh through twelfth grade or sixth and third grade, is you have teachers teach every period, so that there's teach, all the same number of students are spread out throughout the entire master schedule. And every teacher's prep is at the end of the day. So if you have the same schedule as we have and all teachers are teaching, then their prep would be at the end of the day after the buses are going. They could have their prep at the end of the day, or it also equates to that time on Monday. It's almost as though, yes, you're teaching for longer minute contact minutes during the day, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. But then we put them all together on Monday for prep. And then at the end of the day, when the buses go, they can all, they can talk to each other. That way, we can maintain the social distancing. And that four days a week will give us that consistency for the parents.
Does that go as in the in-seat hours?
Yeah, that, it'll, it'll keep us hours, because the activities that the students will be required to do on Mondays still get to be counted for minutes. And they also, we've talked to the state department. And the online, if you have four hours a day that they're doing at work, you get full ADA. Or if there's still twenty hours a week. So we, yes, that is true.
I'm a little confused, because you just said the activity the students will be required to do on Mondays, but yet we're saying they're only going to school Tuesday or Friday.
They're going to be doing their, like, homework, doing further research on their own. If they're in the grade or practicing on Mondays, they still will be expected to do some work. But that's their independent work that they might normally do in the classroom that they would be doing at home, which is similar to what they did this spring, where they did more independent work. And part of the reason that we like this yellow model with the four is because if we blend into, if somehow the transmission level goes up and we're required to put it orange, the four days a week with the ADA days are the Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. So it would be a consistent pattern for families. And again, the board may say, no, we don't want to do this. We want to go five days a week and do the shorter days.
The temperature checks as needed. I, I don't understand that component.
Okay.
Who is that responsible for?
So what we were going to do is ask parents, and it's down here for this right here, encourage parents to screen students every morning before attending school. And so, and then if they come and they say, I feel hot, or they look hot, or they're complaining, we have, Nurse Judy has ordered, what are those called?
The monitors.
Yeah, that you, touchless ones, breach school. But we also don't want to line up everybody at the front door and do, because it would be.
Right. I guess what my point in asking that is, are we making this a responsibility of educators?
The parents.
Temperature of the, of the parents.
Yeah. But again, this is just feedback based on staff, and you guys can certainly change this. This first one says encourage parents to screen every morning before attending. It keeps symptomatic students home, and then we'll send this out. We'll remind them on a frequent basis that we'd like to do that at home.
How are we handling students with disabilities or those that need one-on-one or high?
Yep.
I mean, how are we dealing with all those?
So that's an excellent question. And that's part of what the Monday could be used for, if there needs to be some one-on-one assistance, not just for students with disabilities or students with PFO, but anybody that may be having trouble and they need to have office hours or be individually with teachers. Small groups also. We will be looking to look at every single IEP and see what the hours are. And once this is approved, does it fit within there? Are we meeting the needs of all students? So every single student, every single student's IEP and PFO is going to need to be reviewed. We talked about that last week with the principals.
I mean, I know it's just so hard, it's so much work anyways, trying to meet all those needs. And then also, my other concern with four-day week, and like you're saying, at least it gives some type of consistency. Will there be, what about the base program? Is that even going to be available to these parents?
Yep.
Or, okay.
Yep, we have, and I put the base guidelines, Mr. Wallace and Ms. Adams, the Adams, just assigned that. And that's in the, in the bottom here, I have it in the resources. They have different levels for theirs as well.
Okay.
In fact, they've even done the staffing, of current staffing versus staffing they'd have to add if we are on this schedule.
I'm just thinking about the full-time, the parents' day. Were full-time and might not have the childcare or the availability of it. And what was the other thing there? Do we have a policy established for, to at least provide to the parents in the sense of if a child comes and they are based on, given the nurses or the teachers' perspective symptomatic?
Yes.
Runny nose, cough, whatever, that they're sent home? Do we have that in like written format so parents understand if we call and see your child that's going home?
Yeah, and we will have to communicate that out. Nurse Judy said we probably need to update ours, but I'm just going to quickly go down. This is something that we will be sharing with families, is that this, if there's symptoms, we're going to tell the families that they need to have, be able to stay at home until there's something free. And Panhandle Health District and the contact tracing folks are certainly able to help us follow through as well. But they just updated this so that we could have this.
But it's only comprehensive, it's not if the child comes to school with a runny nose and.
Yeah, any, well, in any of these things where families feel if there's a temperature in any of these things, that's where the school nurse would get involved and talk to Panhandle Health District to talk to the family.
I think we already have a policy in student hair books that say if your child has any just regular flu use season stuff.
Yeah, prevention of disease, right, is in this policy right here.
Right.
And then contagious, Nurse Judy said this contagious or infectious diseases probably needs to be updated, which she will work on. So one thing in the yellow, and we can definitely talk about the four days, but plan for vulnerable staffs and students. So we have FMLA and we have FFCR and the guidelines. And so, and those are also included. And right now, we are asking if there is any vocal staff for their own issues that would like to be able to teach online, if that's a possibility. So I requested that information through the principals to talk to folks, our staff that we have. Because starting in yellow, right off first day, we are going to need to offer, as all the districts are doing, to maintain their own students. Lakeland Online Academy, which would be our teachers filming them their own lessons, which is why I talked to you about the microphones and the Chromebook setup to film the teacher, where we would have our own availability for folks that want to keep their students at home. Or if they were exposed and they need to self-isolate. Or if they feel like they just don't want to start yet and they need to wait and see how it goes. We could have Lakeland Online Academy. That way, we keep our students with our teachers in our content, with our curriculum and our pacing. If that number is high enough, then we quite conceivably could have our own staff be helping the teacher. If the teacher has over their amount, they can help with grading, parent contact, and help with any overloads. And they could do that, if somebody is a compromised staff person, they could do that from home and not have to come into the school. I can't give you an estimate right now. Once we have an approval from the board of the plan, then we can go out to parents and say, if you're interested, here is a signup sheet, which every other superintendent in the entire state is doing, because everyone wants to keep their own kids. The second option is K-12 IDLA. They have added, the legislature has given money, and they have added elementary to IDLA, which is Idaho Digital Learning Academy, completely online. They have hired, they hire their own teachers and they're all online. But we do get the ADA for those students. So it's, it is a win-win, and they have essential standards, and they follow their own pacing calendar. It's just not our teachers and our curriculum, it's state standards, but it's different. And families can choose, so we'll be able to advertise both of those options, starting with the first day in yellow. I want to remind everyone, the parent feedback, wanting us to open up in some form or another, either in-person or after blended learning, is eight, for parents was eighty-four point seven percent wanted us to open up in some form or another. The Lakeland, the people that said, I am going to stay at home, but I want to use your Lakeland Online Academy is four point seven-six percent. Remote, I'm going to be online and I'm going to do it myself with my own curriculum. I'm going to basically stay at home, is five point three-six percent. And then undecided was five point one-eight for parents. The staff wants to open, seventy-seven point six-seven percent wanted us to open in one way or another. The staff that thought we should do remote learning was thirteen point nine. And undecided was eight point four-three. So just kind of as a reminder of why these are important, I think, for us to offer right off the bat.
You had maybe mentioned that something, so I'd just like a little clarification. If a student or staff, well, it's not really the elements of the staff, but if a student tests positive, I guess it would be for COVID-19, and they have to self-quarantine for fourteen days, are they required to still attend school remotely? Or, I mean, because it's fourteen days, which would be technically ten days off of their.
Excellent question. If possible, because some are test positive and are asymptomatic and they could participate. But similar to like, if they don't feel well, we're not, it would just be like, we need to use a sick day, because they don't feel well, maybe they have a fever, maybe they, you know, maybe they just really are sleepy or, you know, it depends on if it's students.
But if the student is not case symptomatic, if they actually have COVID-19, is it going to be a mark against them, given that, you know, they obviously can't do online learning at that point?
Yes. It would, I, I assume, and again, we, these are all things to work out, but my assumption would be, it would just be like the sick days are now, if somebody's sick and they're at home, they have a certain number of days they were sick to make up for work and turn it in for full credit.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I really know our staff is going to be super compassionate and flexible.
I'm sure.
They just want the students to eventually learn the standards that they are supposed to learn. So they will still hold them accountable for that, but they're not going to push them if they're not feeling well.
Now, can we get rid of the nasty letter that these parents were not having their kids?
Uh, yeah, and you can see, you can see down here. And that has been changed actually quite a bit in the last few years. It was even more current the very, I was like, goodness gracious, my first year.
I just feel like we're in this, once again, here we are again, you know, I feel like we're back to March almost.
Yes.
We are a little more way forward, organized and planned, but I just feel like we're in this area that's going to be so hard for us to send that type of letter to the students or parents.
So that's why here, Ramona, ensure policies and practices, don't encourage new staff to come to school sick. That would be right in that, we need to be more understanding and flexible with that, for sure. Okay, so social distancing protocols in the yellow, maintain social distancing to the greatest extent possible. And again, we are going to try, it might not be perfect, but it will be to the greatest extent possible. In Portland, they're saying with practical in their plan. Post calls just came out, I haven't finished reading, post calls just came out a few minutes ago. They're going to be born next week. And we want to explicitly teach, we talked about this in green, what is social distancing? Hand hygiene, cough and sneeze into your, you know, into your elbow here, mask etiquette, not making fun of people, you know, allowing people to, if they want to use it or don't use it, to just appreciate that, just teaching that explicitly to, to students. Hand sanitizer is available, extra masks. Mr. Wallace and Mr. Ferriola have ordered hand sanitizer and masks. Or, so we're stocked up with that. Schools, it's to stop the spread, it just is part of the, of the teaching was how to focus on preventative measures, being healthy, it's like the wellness things we were doing before. Avoid sharing materials and supplies. Classroom materials is, you know, especially at elementary where they tend to put things together, will be separate. Guests arranged to allow, to this, limit the classroom activities that don't allow, so not be into groups in this yellow state. And then the lunch schedule will have to be changed. They are saying that we're not allowed to eat in the lunchroom. So in classrooms, and maybe use different classified people to help, so that the teachers still get their baby-free lunch, that we allow parapros and other people to rotate through. So it might not be like all kindergartners in first grade going to the lunchroom at the same time. It's going to have to be on a stagger. If the weather's nice, the best place they said to eat is outside. So lunch schedule's going to have to be different than normal, which we, Mr. Wallace, then Kevin, has talked about. Chime in if you want, rhyme for anything, if you have other things to drop off and pick up, so that not everybody's coming in. Elementary folks have talked about this, be a little bit of staggered times, not too far apart, but that they can go in, so that not everybody is just in a mask at the same time. Library, going into the classrooms versus the students going to the library, because with cohorts, they say if we're in, remain in the classroom, if somebody does test positive, then just the inner circle of people that were within six feet for more than fifteen minutes were the only people that would have to self-quarantine, self-isolate at home. So not going into the library to have different germs there, but having library come to the classroom. Release times, distance as much as possible, and large gatherings, limit those. So, let's see, this is. Face coverings will be expected, so this is the yellow. And again, the board's input on this is discussion for you guys to talk about. Base coverings will be expected where social distancing cannot be mandated, maintained, as mandated by the governor's order. Extra base coverings are available. So I'm happy to change the wording on this. What are your thoughts?
Based upon the feedback that we got from the parents and from the staff, and based upon the current order of recommendation, whatever the Panhandle Health put out and its guidelines, and the ADA's recent update, July 2nd, I think it was, I, I'm hesitant. I understand the principle of the mask, but I'm hesitant to mandate masks, because I do not know every child or staff member in the district who might have some kind of trauma past that the mask triggers. And I just feel like, and I've read so many stories, I have my own personal story, where the person cannot, it's not a choice, it's not an anti-mask or forming, it's not any of that. They literally cannot wear the mask. She happened to be a seventy-six-year-old woman who suffered years of domestic violence, and the mask triggered, triggers the trauma. But she had to publicly declare that in order to enter a feet store, the only one in town to get feet. I don't want to put our people through that. I don't want to put our children through that. I, I really believe based on the feedback, that the parents and the staff are very concerned and about the situation, and take the situation seriously. And I just don't like the mandates. How will it be addressed if someone chooses not to wear a mask?
Well, that's a great, a great, great question. It came up at the superintendent's meeting yesterday. And at that point, we are only in school and we can only do so much. It's mandated by Panhandle Health District in Cootin County, and social distancing can maybe be maintained. My best guess is that we will try to maintain social distancing for students, so that they have six feet apart. If it's something that the parents do not want the students to wear, I think it would have to go through principal or the counselor, that there would be, again, confidentially, to your point, that they weren't trying to wear a mask. It would have to be an individual case-by-case basis.
Do we have any knowledge of how many active cases we have in Rastor? Or Spirit Lake?
Yeah, she's.
In our school district?
Yeah, she said they're still working on that right now. She, they do not have that number out right now. In Cootin County they do, but not in our school district right now.
Of active cases or positive cases?
Both, I just talked to her a couple of hours ago.
Because I know a few days ago, they didn't have a count on active cases, they only did how many people are tested positive. They had no data on who was actually active, sick with COVID, so. What's a really tough one, that face covering, people are really, really divided over that. And I think the, that, that's pretty evident, um, after that mandate that was put out by Panhandle Health, that, um, some people just aren't complying. And I think that that will probably be the case with school, people who don't believe that that's right will probably not comply. And so I was, um, I hope that was a great answer that you gave, and, you know, do what you can.
I, I do, I do know that we want, like, our admin team will be wearing these, um, to try to model that we, uh, it, because they'll probably be within six feet of students and staff. Again, the amount of staff that wants to wear them is over fifty percent. And I don't, that was, again, when disclosed, it may be even, I would presume it'd probably be higher now, based on the Panhandle Health order. Um, but I could be wrong, we could certainly do another survey. I do know that the admin does not want to turn this into a discipline issue. It really defeats the purpose for us to be an educational entity and we want to edu, our mission to educate students. And then we were, and then we have students out of classes because they're not wearing it. That is the last thing that our teachers and our staff wants, that we want to do. So, um, we're really, I guess, looking, I, you know, for direction from the school board. If we're starting, if we start today being yellow, what do we want to write in here that we send out to parents? So that at least our staff and our admin know what the expectations are.
I think that from my point of view, and of course I can't speak for the board, that what you have up there is appropriate, I would like to maybe see something in there stating in certain, you know, there's a circumstance in which you are unable to wear a mask. That would need to be addressed on an individual basis with the school administrator, I, I like that caveat. Yeah. Just letting them know, we're gonna work with you if your child has a reason, uh, that they can't wear one. What do you think about that, Ramona?
I don't like any mandate, because we're taking a whole segment of society and telling them now it's a scarlet letter, you must wear a badge and tell us what your disability is in order for us to agree, all of us to choose, that you don't, that we're gonna, uh, validate your feelings or not, no, I, I don't like that at all. I, I just. And their, their order specifically states, uh, on it, that persons with medical conditions, mental health or disabilities that prevent them from wearing a face covering don't have to do it. A person is not required to provide documentation demonstrating that the person cannot tolerate wearing the face covering.
We can expect that to be strongly encouraged.
What is that?
Can expect that to be strongly encouraged?
Well, even I don't have any problem with expected, I have a problem with, you know, we expect you that as mandated by the governor's order, the individual basis, I think it's simple, it's this, we expect you to wear the face covering.
It's social distancing, isn't it?
Yeah, and we have the face covering that mandated.
Take this part out, is that what you said?
Yes, yes, yes.
You're good with that, Rob, are you good with that?
I actually am, yeah.
Uh, Michelle, you're, are you good with that, if I take that highlighted part out? Is what I'm good.
I'm okay with it, I kind of see why it's in there, because you're saying this was a mandated thing, don't put this on me. And so that's, that's why I see that was in there, but I'm okay with you taking that out.
So if, um, if I'm hearing you correctly, face coverings, and they also said shields, because kindergarten teachers and teaching and speech-language pathologists, counselors want to be able to have the shields, so that they, kids can see that face. Yeah, they said that was okay. So face coverings, masks, shields will be expected where social distancing cannot be maintained. Individual exceptions will be considered on a case-by-case basis, I, I can change the wording, but that's.
No, I think that's great.
Extra face coverings will be available, questions? Now, one other thing I heard somebody say, parental choice, do we want to put anything in there about that? Or is this good enough to cover that piece?
What did you hear someone say about parental choice, I'd like more information about that.
Well, I guess there's been a few people that have emailed me, because the parents are ultimately in charge of their own kids.
Sure.
But I, I, just knowing that forty-six point six percent, again, this was before the Panhandle thing came out. Forty-six point six percent of parents saying they didn't want their students to wear masks, I feel like that is, leans itself towards our parents wanting to have some say over what their students are doing in the classroom. And I would hate to see that many parents saying, well, if you're gonna have masks, I'm not sending my kid. And then we're missing great learning, um, and if we can maintain social distancing and they aren't within six feet for fifteen minutes or more. And I'm not a medical person, I'm just going off of what they're saying. So I don't want to say that I'm expert in any medical advice.
I think parental choice would be a good thing to be put in there, I, I also.
I.
I don't like the word.
I don't, yeah, I don't.
Yeah, I don't either.
I think that falls, I think that can fall into the individual exceptions, because I guarantee you, if a parent is, has an objection, they're gonna call, we can work it out, and it can be discreet. And that way, you know, um, if there are some students that are attending that aren't wearing masks, they're not, you know, certainly don't want them to be ostracized. You, you want them to flow naturally, we just try and make accommodations to get the social distancing.
It's like, we just have to look at it that way.
Well, I mean, I'm on the CDC site and it says, in minutes for K through twelve, elementary or school, where. And their wording specifically says, cloth face coverings recommended when, you know, no social distancing. And then big cloth face coverings may be considered. So, I mean, it's, there is no harsh, you know, totalitarian highway or the highway. And on top of that, they talk about, you know, you have to have some, some policies and procedures in place for discrimination, bullying and all that sort of stuff to specifically target this, because you know that, you know, if a child's upset because his mom's mandating, and then, you know, his buddy comes to school and no face mask, and it's, it's just a, it's going somewhere. And we need to be as prepared as we possibly can to at least eliminate possible outcomes that we don't even know about yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, no problem.
So we need to change the expected to, what was their word, recommended? And then, uh. And I heard Rob say strongly recommended, so how does the board feel about, this is again in yellow. We're in yellow, meaning there's minimal community spread, but we are having all students there, so there's more students in a smaller spot. Um, I had several feedback from, in the staff saying, it seems like we should start with more restrictive in yellow, so we can stay in yellow as long as possible to have all of our students and not have to, they don't want to go to orange if at all possible, because then, you know, they'll have students in person and half are at home, um, depending on the transmission level. But I'm happy to do, uh, whatever. Yes, so that, um.
So my, my question is, what, is there any tea to the, the Panhandle Health?
No, no, it's already got three lawsuits filed. The, Orange County, California just rescinded their ma, mask banning. Every, people are starting to rescind because they're being sued. That's one of the reasons, the sheriff gave his testimony at the first Panhandle Health. And he said, not only did he meet and they don't with all the chiefs, they don't have the manpower to enforce it, but they felt that there was legal issues with it also. The ADA comply, I mean, to me, we're, like Dr. Myers said, we're sort of caught in the middle, we're an education institution. We're here to, number one, try and make up for the ground that these students have lost, right? We, we got so much, we're trying to, you know, give these students and their families the best possible education that we can. We're not the mask police.
No.
Right? And we're not the, and there, there is no, the bottom line is, there is no enforcement to it.
So we probably should change expected to strongly recommend.
How about just firmly recommend? And strongly, to me, implies we might as well have just gone with expected. Because if we're strongly recommending something, we're, we're leaning more into an expected arena. I, I mean, I don't, I, I don't like telling parents, this is what you have to do for your child to get an education.
That they pay for a little tax.
Exactly, that's not appropriate. And I like to believe that the majority of the parents out there are reasonable. That they're not gonna send their kids to school when they're sick. That they're going to, you know, if they have grandma living at home and they really feel that it's in grandma's best interest for Johnny to go to school with a mask on, Johnny comes to school with a mask on, great for Johnny. Yeah, or, or pops it online, I don't know. But I just don't think that we have the authority to dictate that children wear masks. I don't think we have that authority at all.
And we will not suggest to dictate that anybody, I mean, you know, people have to have ownness to.
They do.
Their level of comfort and, and what protection they want.
That being said, would you, uh, the board want to have students and staff be the same level here? Or, um, because they're, the superintendents have talked about, the board can certainly dictate, because staff is being employed by you. Um, if you feel like staff needs to, or you expect, or I strongly recommend, would it be a different level for staff than it would be for students, to your point that you just talked about? And I'm not saying I think, I'm just asking for clarifications before we go forward.
You said it was fifty-fifty?
Uh, and this, and this was before the Panhandle Health came out with their mandate. The staff wanting to wear masks was fifty-one point oh-three. Not want to wear masks is thirty-nine point eight-six, undecided were like point one.
I think we do the same, yeah, same for the children as we, same for the students as we do for the, the staff. Yeah, if, if we have staff that are like, I'm not going before those little people with no mask on, then wear your mask. You have that authority within your own person to say, this makes me feel safe. Or this makes me feel like I'm helping you stay safe. For whatever reasoning a person wants to wear a mask, let them wear a mask. And if they don't, for whatever reason being, whether it's, you know, I'm not gonna follow the rules or whatever, or if there is some medical reason or if there is some personal preference due to problems from the past, they don't want to wear a mask, then don't wear a mask. I mean, it's, I, I don't think that we should become the dictators of the masks. I just don't, I don't agree with it. I have no problem wearing the mask when I need to, I have no problem if clients come into our office and they're like, wear a mask, that mask goes on. I have no problem respecting someone else's comfort zone. You're talking about little people, they don't really know what their comfort zone is. Teachers, they know what their comfort zone is, let them make that choice. I don't think we need to make that choice for them. If there's a teacher in a high-risk category where they say, I can't come to school, if you can't guarantee that everyone's wearing a mask, well, then you said you made accommodations for that.
We haven't made yet, we're, I mean, I mean, we don't.
That's our goal.
This plan includes accommodations for that, I should state.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so I heard somebody say strongly recommend, or somebody else say recommend.
Where.
I, I mean, I.
It's recommend. Okay, so, do you, are you okay with just recommend?
If we do, uh, if we do just recommend, then we can get individual exceptions.
Yeah.
Case by case, and then we eliminate the possible, you know, the people that are singled out.
Right.
Yeah, that's true.
Because you know, the other thing I think about is.
You don't necessarily have as much confidence that everybody have the same.
I hear you.
Uh, you know, standards.
Right.
Not everybody's playing on the same.
Right, and I just, I understand.
But, 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 I, you know, I have the authority to make an exception.
Right, you do, absolutely.
Yes.
Yep, and I worry about those children in our district that we don't know yet are being abused. And what happens when they put that mask on? Or they don't have an advocate to go advocate for them and explain why they can't wear the mask. There, there's just the mask, really, I read from psychiatrists, psychologists, counselors, I mean, and then old people's accounts, I just really worried for our vulnerable population.
And then if there's children that are being abused, that it's not come to the surface yet.
Right.
And they can't figure out why when they put that mask on, they are boom, off the chart in anxiety land. And you've got a teacher now trying to console this child, or the counselor, or the stores. I mean, we're, we're creating vulnerable situations without, you know, any consideration for how we're gonna juggle those.
So is the board, um, I think maybe quickly you can vote on this piece, if you guys feel like the word recommended is. So we're in yellow, and it would say recommended is what I'm hearing?
Yeah, let's just change it to recommend and get rid of the, the John mean, hold on.
I, so I took that, okay, yeah, so we're good. If everyone's good with that, I feel like people are saying, nodding, face coverings, masks or shields will be recommended where social distancing cannot be maintained, and then the extra ones are available. Is that, okay. Buildings will continue to be routinely cleaned and disinfected, I'm actually gonna copy this when we get out. Although I can just do the same thing.
Can you go back up to green?
Yes.
Because I want us to be consistent.
Yep.
I will go back up and put that same.
Well, it says.
But, take the but.
And then green would be encouraged, and is everyone okay with that?
It's a happy word.
Rob, are you okay with that, and encouraged is in the green, that word, and then recommended is yellow. And then I'm gonna go down to orange, just so I can be consistent, and it's, it will say, uh, face coverings. Is everyone okay with using the same wording in the orange? Recommended where social distancing cannot be maintained, is everyone okay with that? And that's where there's half the number of students, yeah, anyways, the blended, so that I feel like is even more appropriate there. Okay, so back up to yellow, um, buildings will continue, like, continue to clean and disinfected. They have that, Mr. Wallace, what's the name of that, there's a special name that we have that new cleaning?
Yeah, I'm not, I don't know the product name, but it's, it, you don't have to scrub, you just.
Yeah, there's.
Right, we actually first started using our buses earlier this year before COVID. Transportation Director Susan Moore said, I think Andre was using, and then cut down flu big time, so really for tenants. So she said, can I, I said, sure. And so that is what Mr. Ferriola has been using, when disinfect, and that's why they can do it in one night, because they don't have to scrub. It does, like, if teachers put, like, paper on the wall, well.
You found that out the hard way, but, but now everyone knows.
Yeah, it doesn't, it works very well.
It, it, yeah, and it has dots all over and stuff, but it, it, it was, everything is correct.
So, I mean, we'll be using that in buses, um, to help with that, um, and obviously, and that's how when we do disinfectant, and they go, and it lasts for about forty-eight, when it, when it goes, so if a virus hits that surface, it dies on the surface.
That just goes strong.
Yeah, yeah.
And no scrubbing.
No scrubbing.
Sorry, I'm washed.
This has to soak.
We did check with all of our admin assistants in the office, and they would like a speed card, so Mr. Ferriola has, um, it's a portable one and it's like this, and it actually can, and he got ones where you can slip a piece of paper or something in, so they don't have to, like, reach around and stuff, so he's got those on order, um, already for all eleven schools, and then one up here for the district office. Um, we have had a few staff reach out to me and ask about Plexiglas for the teaching station. We will have to revisit that, because there have been some staff that have personally contacted me. If they don't, if not everyone in the classroom has masks on, they would like a Plexiglas, their teaching station up front by the whiteboard, and then they want Plexiglas, so that we're gonna have to look into depending on, and I would like to do that on an individual basis. So that we're gonna have to look into depending on, and I would like to do that on an individual basis for staff. I don't think it's a, any sort of uniform thing. I just think that the staff feels more, to your point, if the staff feels more comfortable, we will look into that. Okay.
Absolutely.
Um.
Will, will the COVID money cover all of?
Yeah, yeah, and that's, uh, what he's, uh, Mr. Wallace is using, uh, for this new scars. Um, volunteers and visitors will be limited. We really feel like bringing in outside people is gonna have to be a lot more stringent. Uh, maybe even in yellow, I'm certainly open to saying that they can't come at all if the board would. I mean, I hesitate with already the number of students in, and we're having a full amount of students and staff. I would maybe even say limited, or.
With respect to volunteers and visitors, can you please explain the volunteers and visitors?
Okay, thank you. So volunteers are often, um, like, somebody from the library that's coming to read, the SROs coming to read, or the chief of police, or legos and reads. Um, it could be a, uh, senior citizen who volunteers and comes and reads in small groups. It could be a, uh, guest, uh, I'm gonna show you.
Smokey the Bear.
Smokey the Bear, thank you. Fire chief, you know, these kind of things that are, um, coming to kind of share content.
Okay.
Um, I feel like in the yellow that we should limit that, um.
What kind of pressure and stress is that gonna put on the teachers, uh, to limit the volunteers?
And then the other part, thank you, the volunteers, the, the other piece of that, the volunteers, a lot of parent volunteers come and help with groups, small groups, so they can be in small groups. Well, you saw earlier, we're not gonna be doing small groups that way in the classroom anyway.
Right.
So, um, I really feel like the teachers, I, I could be wrong, and I can follow up, but I feel like the teachers are gonna wanna do this based on their classroom, what they feels for their classroom, and I feel like we, in this piece, if we're going to limit it so that we don't have more than the number in the classroom, we're gonna have to be really careful about that. Now, that being said, what if there's something really important that they wanna share? That class could certainly go and socially distance outside and have somebody present a Smokey the Bear thing or something to that effect, where they can social distance. So I don't wanna limit them, or like, make it too constrictive, but then I also feel like I don't wanna just make it the same as normal. Does that make sense?
Maybe some of those could be virtual.
Absolutely. That is an actually great idea. And now we're, remember the field trip from kindergarten, it's sort of like, you know, you can feel a lot.
That was awesome.
Yes. So do you want me to take out the word? And the reason they have required here is because they're, they have new germs. I'm not trying to be weird, but they have new germs they're bringing in versus this cohort.
Right.
And that's what they suggested for that. So are, is, are, is, are people okay with this, this?
I am, just because it's optional. Whereas going, giving an education is not optional. And so I guess for me, I am, I really wanna hear what other people have to say, but that's kind of my stance on it. It's, it's, you can go or not.
Yeah, okay.
Do we have, um, I'll see procedure, whatnot, for, with regard to volunteers and visitors? Because what I look at, it's a form of my mind, goes, okay, you've got twelve classrooms, and each teacher on the same day brings in an additional twelve to twenty-four extra bodies within the classroom, that creates a huge problem. The likelihood of that happening is probably zero. But, you know, worst case scenario, it could happen. Do we have, I mean, like, does a teacher need to put in with principal, hey, I'd like to have somebody here on this stage? Principal that is monitoring the influx within the building.
Yeah, and we've talked about that at the principal's meeting last week, we talked about that. That would be a principal responsibility, which they would need with their admin assistant to help control that.
Okay.
And they all, visitors and volunteers check in at the office anyway, so.
Correct.
They're starting like, oh, we've already got too many today, thanks for dropping by, or we're not gonna be able to do that today. Okay.
So I have a suggestion, instead of, uh, doing all the, be limited to a base coverage required, why not just do something like volunteers and visitors to campus, will be limited to, based on social distancing. Maintaining social distance. You're not gonna come, and unless it's an event that we can carry their social distancing. Then we don't have to require them to do this, or require them to do that, we just say, hey, you know what? The only way you're gonna be here is if we can maintain social distancing.
Right.
I don't know.
Based on the numbers.
Based on ability.
To social distance.
Yeah.
I like that.
Because then, you know, we're not mandating them to do anything. We're just saying, hey, you can come if we can maintain social distancing. Now, if that's an assembly outside where a class goes outside, or you know, virtual, or, I mean, it's, it's broad.
Right.
But it gives us some teeth to say, hey, you know what, it's not the same as it was last year.
Right, and I think that way, teachers with lesson plans, if there's teachers that are really, you know, passionate about Smokey the Bear coming, here is an opportunity and a way for that to occur.
Yes.
Okay.
I would agree.
Okay, is everyone okay with that?
Uh, I haven't talked, oh, yes, the one we just did?
Yep.
It worked.
Yeah. Okay, uh, no assignments of lockers, uh, because they, they congregate around, the principals feel really strongly that the classroom set of textbooks are in the classroom, and that they don't need to go, the lockers are more of a social thing. So, so the, the textbook's going to be going home. Um, depending if they need them, a lot of our textbooks are actually available online. Or the, the, the teacher would have pieces that needed to be online. Um, we don't have enough to send textbooks home for all.
I just don't want kids coming back with back injuries, being around seventeen pounds of books, you know, or seven hundred pounds.
Yeah. Okay. Um, the plans, each plan, school's plan, will have a place for the immediate separation. If somebody feels symptomatic and they need to be checked, the school nurse will bring them, um, down and check them out. That's basically what that says.
And let me go back to the lockers. What would be a special circumstance?
Um, sorry, well, I just put that in there because if there's somebody that maybe does have, that, that needs to have some asthma, I mean, I don't know, something that maybe.
A place with their stuff.
Yeah, and there's, I just wanted to make sure that I just wasn't saying blanket no.
Okay, well, I like, I was just curious. I was thinking of a couple of circumstances in which somebody would need that. And so I was just wondering what your ideas are, but, all right, thank you.
For this, it's going, cause I just popped back up to the green to see what the origins of the green. Which we will need to go in years long for at this.
Yeah.
Um, so we're thinking no lockers regardless of the atmosphere for this year specifically.
Yeah.
And we'll revisit next year.
Yeah, that's what we were thinking.
Okay.
We have the principal's meeting. We'll go back after we're done with yellow, we, I'll go back and change the green based on this yellow.
Okay.
Um, so lunches won't be allowed in the classroom or outside, whether permitting, and that's just based on, we're not supposed to have them sitting across from each other in the lunchroom, that goes. Now, this next one goes, there's, um, this one actually. Ensure policies and practices, don't encourage students to have to come to school sick. We are not doing the attendance incentive with the iPads and the bike and all that. We told Parker Toyota, like, we're gonna have to think of something else for incentives for kids, but that's not it.
Maybe assign a completion, isn't that messed up?
Yeah, something else, but we're, we're still working on that. So this is the, um, bus piece that Mr. Wallace and Suzie and I put together. Uh, bus transportation will be available with a maximum of two students per seat. Parents will be required to sign a waiver prior to use. Face coverings will be parental choice, and again, we can change this, this was just before we started talking, but not required unless otherwise mandated. We can take that out. Extra face coverings will be available, and enhanced cleaning will be utilized, so I assume that, based on what you guys said earlier, that people want to change this piece.
Yep.
Um, social distancing is difficult in the buses, so it, they just need to know that they will not be six feet apart if they choose to optionally have their students ride.
I wonder if we need to have a waiver if they choose.
Right, here, sign a waiver.
Sign a waiver? No, I mean, if they're not gonna wear a mask, I don't know. No.
It basically.
They're signing a waiver anyway, so regardless, they're signing a waiver. Mask, no mask?
Yep.
Okay.
Just saying that I realize that social distancing, the recommended social distancing cannot be adhered to on school buses. They have hand sanitizer that they have, the, um, drivers will have the mask on when the students are coming in, and then they pull it down when they're driving. That's how we did it in the spring, um, and they are okay with that, the drivers are. And then whether the parents want their kids to wear or not is up to them, but they will be available if they want.
I know drivers don't want to wear masks, but these are required.
Yeah, we didn't, we recommended, but we didn't require them in the past year.
Okay.
Um, is it possible to have more than stu, two students per seat if they're of the same family?
Brian brought that up today. What, do you, he, he just didn't think we needed to get that detailed, but, but we maybe could if we want.
Most of our routes can be run, uh, in school bus, there's twenty-four seats. So that would put forty-eight kids max on a bus. Um, they do have a maximum capacity of seventy-two or three per seat, I mean, for high school and junior high kids, that's pretty tight, and they're big, and they really, they sort of overflow.
Yeah.
Um, there's only a few routes that, that are consistently, we get those numbers, mostly for Benny Kiefer, um, around Majestic, Radiant Lake, those subdivision, they're full. So we may have to run another bus on those routes to do it. Um, we're also thinking possibly our numbers might be less, given some parents in that area might just choose to uh, drive their students. So I guess we'll have to see. I think the forty-eight's a happy medium. I talked with, actually, uh, Suzie Moore today, saying, could you make it work if we had, sort of, that was our backline? And she said, yeah, if it was down to like one student per seat, twenty-four, we couldn't run the program. We don't have enough buses of drivers, given expected numbers, so we thought that was reasonable, three, I mean, you start getting three per seat in those buses, that's pretty full.
Right.
On your.
Well, it says, the wording says that the maximum of two students per seat, but what if, say, three children from the same family or a bus stop, can they all three sit in the same seat? And then two kids in another's, other seats?
We just do a plan of two students per seat?
Right, or they.
Maximum of two students unless, let's see, a maximum of two students unless related, or maximum of two students per seat unless students are from the same family.
Yeah.
That's what we're running.
And, and we certainly could do that for the three, that would be really
Yeah.
a very minor case, and as a general rule, the kids almost like their own seat, you know, if they can, of course, that. I, I think that we can use common sense if a circumstance like that happens.
Okay, and then are people okay with the face coverings will be parental choice, but I assume that you guys wanna take this off?
Yes.
Based on earlier, so does everyone?
That's great.
Um, face coverings will be a parental choice, does that what you guys, or how do you?
I personally, I would still just say recommended, but are a parental choice, because we got recommended in all the others, remember? We're jabbing it, we're jabbing it to the end here, for an hour. So I would recommend, but.
Hey, but, and, but, we also, we cannot add the where social distancing cannot be maintained, so that's a little bit different from buses, cause it will not, it, you cannot do six feet.
No.
Right, so do you want, what, you want?
Face coverings are recommended, comma, but will be a, will be up to the parental, they, that, being recommended is not a parental choice, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, just recommended, it's not weird again.
Okay.
They really are.
Okay, so I need to say will be, because we're in that tense, well. Okay, so is that good?
Mm-hmm. Oh.
Right. Um, and I need to, she wanted me to put in here then a ten. Just saying. Okay, and then the extracurricular is the IHSA guidelines that just came out. I'd link them in down below, and they will be following that, um, guidelines.
Oh, did it come out?
Yeah, for the fall sports, yeah, it, they got, came out early. So, um, what, or is everyone okay if we go down to orange, or do you wanna talk more about?
No, I'm gonna talk.
Yeah. Um, so the thing in yellow that we still wanna make sure everyone is on board with is the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Not, and not have Monday, and having the Monday off. When we get to orange, which would be a moderate community spread, and we would need to go to blended learning. So this would be, uh, blended between students, will be all trained between in-person and, and on stream, live. It could be live stream, and our idea is that the, uh, half the class and family units are kept together, but half the class is in the room, so it's more social distance. The other half can be watching it at home, live while the teacher's teaching it. Or if they can't do it at that particular time, it will be in the Google Classroom, and they can sign in and then observe it. So that's synchronous or asynchronous, both available. And then precautions will include social distancing to the greatest extent possible, the face coverings, and then I will change that to the recommended.
And the red, yellow, or orange, green, all of these are defined by Panhandle Health, is that correct?
Um, there, they.
Who determines what we're in, I guess is my, is my, you, you addressed it a little bit earlier, where you said, um, they.
So they will determine, they will, yeah, they determine what the.
Yeah, health.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
But then the board, um, gets to say where it is on our plan.
Okay.
So their levels, if you looked, have green, yellow, and red, but we have an orange also, so really, they say where the transmission is, our school liaison, um, is Annette Arumak, and she says where we are in our district. But then it's the board's responsibility to say where it aligns in our, in our reopen plan.
Okay.
I think everybody's sort of used the same coloring scheme, right, and then the framework do the same things, so everybody's on the same visual idea.
Yeah. And just so you know, Portaling was going to go with a five, they haven't finalized it, but they were gonna go with a five system, green, lime, yellow, orange, red, and they think they're gonna take out lime and go with the four. And then Post Falls was initially gonna go with the three, and they decided yesterday, we had a long superintendent's meeting, and they are gonna go, Post Falls is now how we recommend, they're more than four as well, so it would, it would be nice if all three of the districts that share K-Tech in this valley are on the same four level system.
There is no hyperlink for IHSA.
So, just so you know, okay, thank you. Um, oh, I just did it right before, can you re, so we would need to refresh, yeah, wait.
No, I just. I would have to reattach it.
Okay, she, so she did that a couple hours ago, and I just got it from him
Okay.
minutes before, and I just uploaded it, that's like, we can always look at it, cause this is just.
It would be available in your drive for what has been shared with you, that'll update automatically.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I'm gonna take out this. So going with the same wording, face coverings will be recommended where social distancing cannot be maintained. That's the same wording as we did. Um, so we would encourage parents to screen, we'd still plan for the vulnerable staff, and students have the online, um, options. Social distancing to the greatest extent possible, same things, these are all the exact same things. This one just says no sharing, instead of limiting, it says no. Um, no classroom activities, because the transmission level in the community has gone up, so we, it doesn't say limit, it says no. Um, and I can certainly change that, and then the same things here, except for we've added that the school events, assemblies, gatherings will be changed or canceled. It's not even like, don't try not to do it, it just says there won't be any. And then field trips will not be allowed, that's. Um, and then we have the face coverings. The cleaning will stay. The cleaning will stay the same. Additional cleaning protocols will be implemented on Mondays. Sneeze guards are still there. Volunteers and visitors won't be allowed if we're in that orange. And again, the board can change this. Face coverings are going to change to a method, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Where the guidelines is.
Oh, it does say.
Well, where social distancing extra, oh, you did it.
Yeah.
Very online issues.
That's good.
It's all good. I got, I got you.
She has to upload it, so that's.
Okay.
Yeah. Sneeze guards, volunteers, each side has a plan, lunches are the same, and then bus transportation, I need to take that from up here and copy and paste that same bus transportation. Okay, so what do, do people feel are okay with that part so far?
Yes, I, I am so.
Thank you. Renee, Rob, you guys, Michelle, are you good?
Yeah.
Okay. Blended learning. So the blended learning piece would be available for students and parents who need help accessing technology. Chat persons, our ITD director, he, our, he has written grants, trying to move 16% of families that don't have, that we're trying to get on that. We have used PERS money to order Chromebooks so that we can get to a, one-on-ones to help those families. Again, I will remind the board that Chromebooks, you can also use it at home offline on documents when you get to school. It's not perfect and you can't access, you know, access internet things, but you can work on things that you downloaded onto your Chromebook at school. You could go home even if your family didn't have the internet, a live stream, but you could do some of the work, go back to the school and it would download. So there is, there is a benefit. It's not as good as being, you know, having internet, but that's a one good piece. Traditional grades, and this was important to the staff, in the staff feedback, that traditional grades and accountability measures would, would accommodate as necessary, but would be in place. Same certain children from the same families or in the same group, like even if it's a blended family. And then a Tuesday, Thursday group, Wednesday, Friday. Mondays, teacher collaboration planning, staff development online interventions, giving additional support, office hours if families wanted that. And then students will practice independently, concepts of row masters three when they're working from home. So sometimes they do this within the classroom. They can do a lot of this reinforcement on that Monday as well. And all essential standards will be taught. So then normally it'd be like a, they'll schedule A day, B day, A day, B day. I know Post Falls is recommending Wednesday because they want a Monday, Tuesday group. They want Wednesday off and then they want a Thursday, Friday group, or Monday, Thursday group and a Tuesday, Friday because they didn't want it attached to a weekend. I am open to do whatever the board would like to do. I, the only reason that I had a parent say in that parent survey, there's so many Mondays that are holidays, can you just not do Mondays? And so we had actually copied Post Falls and they're just doing the Wednesday, but then after that parent comment, I thought that makes a lot of sense. So I'm happy to do whatever the board wants on the day.
Well, I think if we do put a cohort in on Mondays, then we disadvantage the rest of the groups, or we disadvantage the Tuesday, Thursday group. Because the Monday cohort has days off, but the Tuesday, Thursday do not.
Well, they would have to go on Fridays that week, or Wednesdays that week.
No, I think it just makes it more simple.
And close.
When you close that.
I mean, I'm arguing whatever the parents, staff need us to do to make their life easier.
Yeah.
And even there are the ones that are going to have to look through.
Yeah. Mr. Wallace, would you tell, talk to them about, we had some questions come up on base because and he, can you talk to them about what you told me ahead of time, depending on the amount of families that would sign up? Because that might be a childcare issue, which I'm really focused on for families.
So I met with Suzie Adams, our base director, earlier this week. We were talking about part of the challenge would be, do, do we run base, you know, all day? So we obviously do that for the summer, but during the school year, it's just before school and after school. And so our staffing is based on those hours. If we have to run it from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, 12 hours, we need more staff. And so the, the rules by, to have our license for childcare is that you have to have one staff member for every 24 students or children. So for a 12-hour day, we can have, we can cover that with two people by, you know, having it early and late and having them overlap. When we get, if we do have numbers that get from 25 to 48, we have to have two, it's like five staff members to sort of stagger that, or we have some staff members who would have like a five-hour shift, not a full eight. So if we're doing that at all of our, let's say, six elementary schools, and we have to have five, and I need 30 staff members just for that, and I have some already hired, we won't be able to hire 30 people right now for base. So we'd have to take some of our parent professionals, and that would have to be their work assignment to help cover that depending on numbers. So I think, you know, with our current staff, if we assigned them that way and they were not providing their other tasks and structural support, and I guess that conversation would be the principals and Dr. Meyer. I think we could make it work. We'd have to find the space, obviously during the day, on how that might work. So then there's going to be some challenges and it would all depend on how many people sign up.
What would be the requirement for running a full day base program? And why are we looking at a full day base program? Is it to accommodate if we have to go into an orange or, or something of that nature?
I think it was to, one, do we help out with staff?
Yes. Well, part of the question is if we started in yellow and we go with the plan that has the four days, right off the bat, there will be families that need childcare on the Monday because they may work five days a week, and if their students aren't attending in person on Monday, then they would need to have the availability to have base. So that's why we're discussing it. Because childcare is, it came up, if you guys read in the parent comments, it came up several times throughout the comments. So I just thought we needed to at least put that out there, that that might be a need on Mondays for some folks.
And the reason we cut the Monday out is for the teacher preparation as well as to limit the exposure that these children have to one another?
Not really the exposure piece as much as if we spread out and don't give the teachers their prep during their contract time.
Yeah, I remember that.
Then we need to give them their prep. So instead of like shortening the day and having four or five shorter days, and then their prep's at the end, so we can spread kids out more throughout the entire school. Instead, then we, I said that they would take all of those prep times and put them like onto the Monday. You know, otherwise it would be a shortened day, five days a week. And I feel like for staff, it, for them to have a day where they could help students with disability, they could be preparing, maybe film some lessons, plan and have like a chunk. Also for preparing professional development for classes, for how do you teach blended learning? How do you do, and really try to help if it's all in a big chunk, it might, in my opinion, it might be better than just trying to piecemeal it every day for an hour after school at the end of the day.
It also makes the transition, if we end up getting an outbreak, transition to that orange, a lot.
Then all of a sudden we're out. If we start with no Mondays, then it's the same if we go to orange. Exactly, exactly.
Well, true to be told, I mean, it reduces the potential for spread by.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
True. By the numbers.
Yeah.
In the base program, how are we going to maintain the social distancing? When kids aren't sitting at desks, scapegoat. How are we maintaining it?
Well, they, she has guidelines and I put them down there. Her guidelines are the same as from CDC with the childcare facilities. And again, you actually spoke to it earlier, like for kids, like how do you?
Make her cats.
And try to, and then a lot of spots like base, if there's not students in the building, can use the gym, the commons. They can use outside, they can break up into smaller areas if there's not staff and students entering the building. Okay, so. It is going to be a challenge for sure. But she did do pretty well last spring in addressing it.
Oh, I, yeah, I just, if there's a lot of physical activity, yeah, I'm sorry, but the kids walking masks and putting probably on the video.
Totally, but it'll be like trying to keep masks on kids. There's some funny ones out there. Oh, I haven't seen any, so. So that's kind of our thought. There is a necessity, what I'm hearing is there's a necessity.
We think there could possibly be a demand, I guess, if there wasn't large numbers, then we could revisit it, but if there wasn't demand, I think.
What constitutes large numbers?
48, 25?
Either school.
I think per school, if we started getting numbers where it was getting up to that, you know, you, if you're 15 to 20, we're getting pretty good demand.
Okay.
If you have like five kids and we might say, ah, now we got two staff, 12 hours a day for five kids, maybe that's, maybe they're going to have to find other accommodations, but if it starts getting closer to that 2024, I would think that maybe that's a service we can help provide.
Okay. And they could always like Spirit Link and say, oh, we have enough at Apple, so we can move over there if a family's behind where not. So it'd have to be based on per site, then we need to meld two together. We had to do that last spring. Okay, yeah. And then red, red. Remote red is substantial, and that's really where we don't want to go. That's where we were last spring where it's all online and it's, we don't want to be there. So we're going to try to have a motto of like staying yellow as, Garwood staff came up when they were met with Jake Massey, the new principal, like maybe we have some sort of like staying yellow as long as, like some sort of like model in our district, like we're trying to follow these guidelines to stay yellow as long as possible because people want their kids back in school. I mean, it's clear, it's evident that, and the majority of staff want to be back in school as well, so. Yeah.
That's a good one.
The other thing I do want to say with all of it is I want to be flexible with staff on the Mondays. There may be, obviously it's part of their contract time, and there may be, you know, required staff meeting or professional development, especially in the beginning of the year where they're really learning together as a group or departments or grade levels are working together. But I do want to also be flexible with staff. Some of them may be able to do their time at home where they do their filming of lessons and they're uploading and planning and they're fitting on Google Classroom individually or talking to kids, you know, through the Google and the, I want to be flexible and treat them as professionals. And I'm not saying there won't, the principals won't have some required things, but I also want to maintain flexibility for our staff on that day as well. So that's just something I wanted to make sure, put out there. Okay, so then the red is, hopefully we don't get to red. And then this confirmed case, I, we kind of talked about this earlier. If you've tested closet, this is all based on Panhandle Health District's guidance from them just this morning updating 10 days, the 24 hours, if you have been notified and you've been exposed. No, if you have a confirmed case, if you're exposed, it's the 14 days. Principal responsibilities, I've led this out, laid this out. The lead school nurse is Nurse Judy, and she's going to kind of get our point, liaison with Panhandle Health District. I put that all out there. I want to just note that the, that, the whole piece here really is summarized in this that I want to send out to all parents. So that, to me, this was really easy for families to look at and have a flow chart. I like that that's, it's just really visual. I thought that was good for them to put on the refrigerator. Please note, this is, I just, when we send this out, it's a living documented and we're going to be updating it. The response in American Emergency Confidence Plans, which I've linked below, Ms. Sexton has updated that with the newest requirements in there. Buildings have been assessed, our ventilation systems have been updated and cleaned out. That's one of the things we were supposed to do, and I just talked to Mr. Barrio this morning. Water systems were actually checked before this all started last spring, and we have great water, all passed the test. And the disinfection went directly before school starts and weekly thereafter, so right? And then the monthly thing of the night, I think, that lasts for three days, like Mr. Wallace was talking. Then I did do the parent staff, you have the full reports. I took out the comments for this public document because I had a staff person say that it, they didn't feel like it was appropriate. So I took out, Chrissy cut back, took out the comments. So when this goes out to the public, it will only have the staff, the results, but it won't have the comments that you all saw. This is the defining levels that just came out in finally yesterday. So this is from the Panhandle Health and just came out yesterday, they have category one, two, and three. Our yellow and orange both fit in category two. So that would be a board's decision at what point we are going to move into orange. Now, we might have a recommendation from them, but I certainly, when they do the transmission level, we asked them yesterday at the superintendent's meeting, is this going to be a weekly call, a daily call? Like, how are you going to let us know? So we each have a school liaison, all the districts and all, and private schools have all the community liaison, and they will be talking to us about this. So.
Well, I guess my biggest issue is I want the liaison speaking specifically to our community. I don't want to hear that we need to change because Cooley County has gone like that.
And that has to be specific. Particularly Bonners Ferry said the same thing, Cheshaw County said the same thing, like, ah, show, like they do not want their schools to be shut down because Cooley County goes up. So it's a very district-oriented, that's why they gave us each a liaison. So that's their intent. They just said, as of yesterday morning, they didn't know, are we going to talk daily? Are they going to like come to me or they're going to Nurse Judy, and then she talks to me, and then I go to the board and do I? So we don't honestly have those logistics worked out yet because they don't have it worked out for sure yet there. They're still working on. But I just want the board to be aware that they have three levels, and then we have four. So I just want the board to be aware that that means that there may be a determination at some point where we're, they're in yellow and somehow, but they're telling us the level that we're at or the number of cases or whatever, that I may come to the board and say, I'm recommending, we need to talk, and I'm recommending based on, you know, this, we need to go to orange because of this. And, and that would be a board, at least in my opinion, that would be a board discussion.
Sure.
Thanks. And then here's just regular updates. This pediatrics thing and several recommendations came up over and over and over in the parent survey. I felt it was important to include that because parents felt really strongly about that. So I put that in. Back to school framework, our district website, this is going to go out to folks. Again, Nurse Judy said we need to update, so we'll be looking, Chrissy, to have that. Maybe Nurse Judy can even look at that before our next board meeting. And then the one, staff health and our updated response, the base transportation from the state and their recommendations we put into here, and then the IHSAA regulation. So just so you, because you guys can look at these, based on the fall sports, and it, it basically says almost what we said, like if you can use masks, but they're not required, but recommend, it's kind of like what you guys already have all said. And then if you're the team, home team, you know, have had certain stipulations set up, it talks about that in in each of the sports. Obviously with swimming and cross country, they don't.
I would really hope that they wouldn't be like, what's that mask on?
Yeah. Okay. Any, before we go, I want to remind the board before we, these are the things I wanted to talk about. And we'll come back to Mr. Wallace when he talks about the facilities, but I want to make sure that the board is in agreement with green, yellow, orange, red, the fact that we have four, what's in each one. And then I feel like we talked about the masks. That was really important to me that I got, I didn't know how you all felt, so I feel like that was important. Mr. Wallace will come back with that. I want you to know what the extracurricular, and that we're for sure going to follow that piece. And it's kind of like riding the bus, participating in extracurriculars is. And it's kind of like riding the bus, participating in extracurriculars is optional, so it's not like, you said, like, it's not like you're, you know, you have to have pre-appropriate public education, so. Um, and then I want to come back to the certified employees and then question suggestions. So that being said, is there anything else, suggestions, questions, um, things from here that you want to talk about, and I will go back and change the green, so it's in alignment, because I think they all need to change the green and orange.
I would recommend.
Yeah, I changed, oh, yeah, after the very top. Yeah, she's saying, yep.
Document, let's be.
I changed them right here.
Group.
Yeah, I changed them in each group, but I think what Trustee Thompson's referring to is up at the top, I need to go in here. I need to update them in this, because this is the overview, and so that's, I think, what you're referring to. So I will go back and do that up there, take away the part about the mandates that you had, and then the recommended where social distancing cannot be leading. Um, and I'll make sure it's all in alignment. If that is being said, and I changed that, is there anything else that you have questions, concerns, issues, suggestions that you want to have before this would go out to the parents and the staff?
I think I made all my suggestions while we were going through it.
Okay.
I think you did a nice job, and she just wanted to do the next step.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Trustee Thompson?
No, I, I, I think that the committee and all that, with their time happening to this, did, did a good job. I mean, it's, it's, I think, that's a great representative of our district, and, um, I don't know necessarily that there's a caveat in here with regard to giving staff or the teachers, et cetera, the, uh, you're not required.
Yeah.
It's, it's choice, so, um, I don't know if that needs to be addressed in here, but I want that to be run through to the staff. If you want to wear a mask, please let them do, but if you don't, it's okay.
Do you have a suggestion that you want me to put in there, or do you?
No, you can just mention, how are we going to, you know, are we going to mandate to the staff, but we have students, and I don't think we should be mandating to anybody.
And this is going out to the parents, right?
Yes.
This is, this is how much to do with it. They'll go to the staff too, they'll go up to the staff as well, yeah. Um.
So that's just my, my, I just.
Cause you brought it up.
Right, and I, I really like the staff to know that we're in support of their choice, say, not.
Oh, but isn't that sort of covered in, because we just.
Yeah, it doesn't say students, it just says, "based coverage or regulated."
Okay.
It doesn't say, doesn't, doesn't designate students or staff, so.
Okay, thank you, perfect, yeah, thank you for mentioning that.
Yeah.
And this is important.
So really, nothing, nothing needs to be changed.
Okay, so you're good with, as it is, and, for some, yeah, Chairman Wallace? Okay, so I will, uh, finish all of that tonight before we go, because I want to get it ready to go, and then I will send it out to all of the staff tonight in a district communication, and I'll send it all out to all of the parents, um. For that, okay. Then, now to this piece, I would really, um, before, before Trustee Wallace, before, um, I would like to ask, uh, how the board feels and, um, we've done this before when staff did a LOA, uh, which is not the Lakeland Online Academy, which now a leave of absence, um. If a certified employee, um, doesn't feel comfortable, and you do not have the ability to have an online position for them, um, we have had staff come in the past that has come out of their contract even though they've already signed it. If we can find a replacement, that has typically been the precedent for enough, we have to follow the same thing that just telling you what we've done in the past. But, uh, there may be staff that comes with an LOA, a leave of absence for a year. Uh, or there may be staff that says, I would like to go teach someone else, I don't feel comfortable, I'd like to get my contract. Not that, I know you'll need to look at them on a case-by-case basis, but I would at least like to know, uh, to answer back, staff, if the board is feeling strongly one way or the other, or if you have questions.
Oh, as you said, it would be on a case-by-case basis. I don't know how we can go strongly one way or the other. I think it just depends on the circumstances and the situation, not that, you know, we need to get into the the weeds with the employee by saying, well, why? Because, you know, if you don't want to disclose why.
Yeah.
Due to, you know, medical issues or personal issues. So I, I mean, I would just have to say it's gotta be on a case-by-case basis. Without, it's going to be carrying, I shouldn't, the new circumstances and.
I mean, I think that in the past, you know, we given people
Yeah.
opportunity to get out of their contract.
Yeah.
It would be most good, and I think that, you know, letting them know that, I think that the board is
Is willing to.
is willing to listen, you know, the contracts aren't set in stone.
Well, they are.
I mean, they are set in stone. Well, yeah, exactly, but with responsibility.
Yeah. Get out from underneath it, yeah, they're broken bones. I think so. I think everything being said with this whole, you know, mask, no mask thing, I think that it would be inconsiderate not to consider that, so I mean, absolutely, I think it's, it's definitely something in it.
Good. I, I thought what you was, I thought you all would say that, but I just wanted to double check that, um, I didn't misjudge what you would say. Um, okay, Mr. Wallace, would you come up and talk about the facility use pieces?
So I thought it was important that we talk about the, you know, facility use, um, so just sort of recap what happened since March. Cause when we, you know, when school was shut down and followed the, uh, the state shutdown from state board, um, you know, effectively, you know, administratively, we just made the call, well, we can't be there, then nobody else can be in our buildings, and that was, um, and then after things started, um, the governor had stages and lightened up, and school um, was out, then we did have groups, um, American Legion, um, Real Life Ministries is using uh, Timberlake High School again, there's been some other groups using our facilities where we allowed it per policy to have them start using our facilities again. We did ask every group to give us protocols on their protocols they were gonna follow, not that we just asked to have that on hand, so they forward it to the staff. Um, we asked all groups to sign a waiver, so as the group, they know that, you know, sort of another layer the group is doing that. Um, and as far as I know, things have been going well, you know, if I don't hear complaints, I, pretty much, I think things are going good. One, um, I guess concern I have moving forward is that depending which stages we're in, where is the board on allowing outside groups' use? I mean, the major groups that will be using our facilities is Raff and Park and Rec. Major use throughout the fall and winter. Uh, Lakeland Junior Tackle, and it's pretty much mostly all of our kids, and Spirit Lake Junior Tackle. Um, they, they use our fields, but they're, you know, most, most of them are, are students. And, you know, Real Life has, you know, they've used Timberlake High School while they're building their north campus, um, they're still there. And those, those are sort of major groups that I know of. I just, you want to feedback from the board, because if we were gonna have at some point, where you're gonna say, no, we can't have a facility use for now, I'd like to give those groups a heads up so they're not surprised. Um, you know, to say, hey, this could be coming down the pipe in September, or depending where we are at with the COVID as a district. Um, and maybe we could go by stages or your general thoughts, I just, I just think that I can, you know, the moment that we start, and this is just me thinking out loud, from sort of the community relations and political point of view, that if we're really limiting, let's say IHSAA has come down and they stopped sports, but we're still letting Lakeland Junior Tackle go, I mean, I mean, I, I think there's, or if we're really limiting what we're doing in our buildings, but it's after school, it's, groups are doing maybe more robust activity than what we're doing, I could see some conflicts, inconsistency, but you know, I'm willing to move forward with where the board is, so that's why I'm sort of opening up the conversation.
Well, I have received a complaint, which prompted me to ask about the use. Um, from a patron who was upset because they drove by the high school and the parking lot was infiltrated with Washington plates. And apparently, we have an adult leave, uh, the inland northwest. You gave him a little calendar guy, um, so, okay, we've got teens that are part of an organization that do not live in Idaho. Okay. I personally have a problem with that. The patron was just, look, what are we doing? This is not right, and they're correct, because if, if our state's doing one thing and the Washington state is doing its own thing over there, it's not appropriate for Washington people to come over to Idaho because we're a little bit more reasonable than Washington. Washington's got higher numbers, Washington's got a whole bunch of other issues, and now they're just infecting our community. And now look at where we're at. Our numbers are allegedly going up, we have these new things that, you know, Panhandle Health District is trying to tell everybody awareness. I don't like the fact that we went to allowing Washington and maybe.
Non-citizens.
Yeah, our community wasn't part of the participation in using our field, it wasn't our community. It was outside sources that were using our community. And I, I don't agree with that, and I don't know, I, you know, I'm not saying let's build our walls, but in a sense I am, because if it's with our community, then we don't have an exposure risk. Now, saying that, depending on where Post Falls numbers are, depending on where Cordillane's numbers are, yeah, we are opening up our exposure, but we're also within our own community still, because we're in our own county. But I don't, I don't see the benefit of exposing Raff drum to outside our community. I don't see the benefit for students, I don't see the benefit for school districts, I don't see the benefit at all. But I also don't know what goes into the facility use. I don't know if people are purchasing our fields for a time. I don't, I don't know any of that. All I know is that the parking lot of Washington Course, and I got parents that are angry.
Right, well, and so as we get to, as a general rule.
Okay.
Um, school districts, when you have your facility use, you need to be fair
Correct.
with how you, you can't discriminate.
Correct.
Okay, so we do have a, a policy though of our fees. So American Legion, our kids, if there's, if it's in our policy, if, if there's seventy-five percent of our students, and we actually do check rosters, it's mostly during gym time um, in the fall and groups want to use it, we, that's free use, and then of course Park and Rec, we support both Park and Rec. If you're outside groups and you're not our kids, um, and you're maybe a sports camp or like an adult, then they get charged the highest fee. So like that group, that outstate group, was being charged the fees. I think during, let's take COVID out of it for right now, I think for COVID, we would have a hard time um, having our fields open for groups to use if they're there as a public agency, and then an outside group comes in, let's say there wasn't a health thing and it was available, and just to say no, I, there could be some legal implications on that.
Oh.
Just, just like, now, given the, the the pandemic and all that, certainly if the board is saying, we only want facility use with Park and Rec or with you know, Real Life or with those, um, you know, I'm comfortable having that conversation more crammed, but I think we can tweak that to make sense for us. Um, and especially as we get gym use in there, but you know, even beyond those outside groups, I, I, I'd like, yeah, that guidance somewhere the board is comfortable, I think would be great, it would help us as administration. Um, because then when the request comes in right away, we could, we could just deny it, and just say that it's not available at this time for for end-outstate groups.
Right.
But then also, but are we gonna have further restrictions though, depending where the pandemic might be, for our groups, our local community groups, Park and Rec and Junior Tackle Football, and maybe a local AAU team, or uh, or a select volleyball team that wants to use that, so. I mean, and volleyball has to do certain protocols, if we, the select team doesn't follow, I mean, all those things, and I'm, I could just see a sort of, this can become, these little things can become big things, and get a lot fired up people, so I'm just hoping that we can uh, and not that what we're here today is forever, if we, we can, we can change, obviously, but sort of see where the board is, and um, I know somebody's request will be coming in, and if things get locked down more in Washington, more of those requests are gonna be coming in for sure. And so definitely the, your guidance and input is greatly appreciated.
Well, I think it is a good discussion point in terms of, you know, when they lock down, is it ethical for us to allow them to go over here? You know what I mean? Like, we're kind of a government agency, and it's almost like we're not supporting their government, you know what I'm saying? It almost looks like we're allowing them to violate their order, whether I agree with the order or not. Um, that's kind of how it would appear to me, and I just wonder if that's the message we want to send. That's, that's kind of my question, I don't know, I certainly don't mind if people from Washington, you know, come over and rent our facilities, you know, but during this time, when they're locked down, if they're not able to do that, we're kind of enabling them to do something that's illegal. Just a thought.
Well, except that, at what point do we start drawing lines and telling us citizens that they can't travel inside the country?
Yeah, it's true, and that's why I wanted to bring that up for discussion, because I'm, I'm not saying that I, I just want to talk about it.
It's, I understand it's a hard thing, but I, and I do agree that we can bring up a can of worms and a whole, you know, ball of yarn or whatever, but, um, I sort of agree with Mr. Wallace that I think if we start making more details, we start making more area for liability.
Yeah, I can see that too.
Or discriminatory action, if we start. I, I just think we have to, yeah, we have to think about that and have some.
I think that's an important point.
And maybe we'll get a case-by-case basis, I think our, our own community, uh, Real Life and Park and Rec, and I mean, they're all here anyways.
Yeah, it's true.
Yeah.
And certainly, if we're on red and we're still allowing people to come in, that's a little bit of a problem, right? Like, if our own kids can't go to school for it and attend to you, then why are we allowing someone else to come and use it? So that's certainly a, a good thought, although for a church, it's on Sunday, and, man, that's a tough.
Well, we did, when it did come down, we have Lake City Church and Real Life both, uh, at our two high schools.
Yes.
And we did say you couldn't have services, because we couldn't. Um, if we got to red, is that the board's desire, like, if our kids can't go in our line, would be if, for a liability, if we're fair to everybody, we're okay, so if we said, no, we're not in, nobody's in, is that where, I mean, at least for that.
To think about that, this, I don't, if they sign a waiver and we don't have kids in the school that are going to be infected by people who are coming into the school.
That our community's getting infected.
Our community's getting infected.
No, that's something about you.
Yeah. Yeah, that's something to think about.
And here's the other thing also, is that this community gives the one that has the taxes, even if they are coming from the outside and paying rental fee. I, again, would probably lean toward Mr. Wallace's about that, you know, if we're in red, then everything's just locked down, because here's the other thing is, who's gonna guarantee it's clean, who's gonna guarantee, you know, where does the, I just think if we're locked down, there's.
And if it isn't in the plan on red, it's locked down for that.
Yeah.
And he's really talking about the yellow and orange states, I think.
So if we get to orange, yeah, so I, I mean, red, I, I, I think we should just say. So if we get to orange, yeah, so I, I mean, red, I, I think we should just say, sorry. And where that would impact and where we'd have to grieve would really be like pardon. But if it gets to that point, you know, probably fourth grade basketball isn't happening, you know? I mean, it is, darn it. But if we're, let's say, in orange and we're only doing half and half and it's sort of gone up or we don't even have kids where we don't think they should be in a cohort, but then we can't, then have them go play football on Lakeland Junior High's field. And so, I mean, it would sort of defeat some of the things we're doing. Do we not care? I, I don't know, the board, I, I certainly think that's where some of it comes in and we have to...
I think we have to take a few things, I think we have to address it when we get there, but also we have to try and, because here's the thing, is that this is, to use the phrase "our new normal," the bottom line is viruses, it can go away, right? We gotta start learning how to live with the thing. And to provide as much normalcy for the students as possible, and if they're in the middle of the fall season or something, I think we really need to address it then. I don't know that we can make that decision right now, just because.
It's not our intent to take it away.
Right.
We don't intend to take it away. So to answer your question that you said earlier, I want to let them, I don't want to pull the rug out from underneath them, you know, at the last minute. It's not our intent to do that. At least it's not my intent to do that. I can't speak for everybody, but it's not my intent to pull the rug out from underneath them. It's my intent to let them stay there as, as long as we can stay.
Do we have boundaries in place right now? You, I mean, it sounds like we do, that you have been operating the facilities, the facility use off of. Is that like in written procedures somewhere, or is that just...
Yeah, we have written procedures when they do, but as far as the specific run was now, like, you know, Lakeland Junior Tackle, all this, as a, they came in and, you know, requested, you know, a few of the fields that they use, mostly the junior high and some practice fields, we have Betty Keeper and the dates, and you know, a lot of it was a big block, Monday through Friday, four o'clock to six o'clock. And we pretty much have sort of approved those practices that are there. They forwarded their the COVID procedures of what they're doing as a group, and otherwise that's all. So the only difference from previous years, honestly, was just this document saying that here's their safety guidelines of what they're following. And then they're running their program, and that's sort of how we've been doing the facility use for them, following our policy, just asking groups for that one extra information for us, for, so if someone was asked, like, "I want that," so like a community member said, "But what do they do?" And I'd say, "Well, this is what they said they were gonna do." And I thought that was important for us to have, and then we did have them sign that, that waiver. But I, you know, I'm certainly, if we just want to keep going with that, and I guess approach it when it happens, you know, but I, I just, when you sort of, you know, suddenly we're in orange and we really don't think we should have it, and we haven't had any conversation, anybody, and they have a week, and I, I mean, I guess maybe it is what it is, but I'm just hoping that where we are, what...
Why do you think we need to establish boundaries? Because it's not fair to you to be just cruising right along and then all of a sudden we're like, "Nope, break's up."
Yeah, I know.
That's, that's not appropriate. It's not for you or for the community. So, yeah, I don't know, maybe we need to make this through for thought and revisit it at the next fourth meeting as far as coming up with ideas and solutions, so that you have parameters to work within that are reasonable for the community and for everybody that's holding back. I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I mean, I could certainly in the next two weeks, maybe do a little research and ask sort of our neighbors' biscuits, how are they planning? And maybe get some ideas to give a some bumpers, and then we can have the discussion just to start the conversation. Yeah, I mean, I don't think we're gonna change anything up due to the month of August right now, so, but it was just more how things might happen. And even now, I shouldn't just pick on Lakeland Junior Tackle, they're just a big group right now. You know, because they're outside and what, but it is football. You can't, there is no social distancing.
No.
So...
And there's no social distancing necessarily when parents are on the side of the family for a reason.
Right. And so, yeah, and so, but just to be aware, if, let's say, you know, we were in our yellow, but we have a big outbreak because of junior tackle, now we're in red. I mean, it's not just that event, there's, this is all sort of there, and so that's why I want the board, because you're not gonna be, we could go to a stage that we don't want to be in, maybe because, or it's something to think about.
That's where it was with the Washington points.
Thank you for bringing that to us. I like it when we can have discussions about that, and I really appreciate that.
Well, we'll talk about it next time. Thank you.
Great, thank you, bye.
Thank you.
I think we can't use it. I think that if we're in red, the community will be limited to what they can and can't do, like, much like what's in the spring.
In the spring.
Yeah.
Okay, we're ready to move on. We have to announce, so first one is to approve denied the draft for the Lakeland Junior. I'm making a motion to approve the draft for the Lakeland Junior LJST. Oh, yeah, it's a long night, huh? I'm gonna approve the draft, make a motion to approve the draft for the Fall 2023 reopen plan overview.
I would, yeah, with the changes that we made.
With the changes that we made. Okay, I'll do it in a second. Okay, I'm making a motion to approve the draft with the changes that we made this evening for the LJST Fall 2023 reopen plan overview.
I second that motion.
Motion in second, everyone clear to say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Bring that motion here. Next is to approve denied the updated policy 15-20, held participation ordinance, remain board meeting. Since we agreed last time, so.
Yeah, I mean, it was cleaned up. I would move to approve the updated policy 10-10, organizational classification.
I have a question. Chair, can we approve all the policies in one block?
No, they, they will be agreed.
Okay. I'll second the motion.
Motion in second, everyone clear to say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Bring that motion here. Next is approved denied the policy 15-20, held participation ordinance, remain board meeting. I make a motion for the approved updated policy 15-0, held participation ordinance to be renamed board meeting participation. I'll second that. Motion in second, anyone clear to say aye. Anyone opposed? Bring that motion here. Next is approved denied adoption policy 41-10 to be renamed equal participation board meeting.
I'll make the motion to approve the adoption of policy 41-10 to be named patron participation in board meetings.
I'll second that. Motion in second, anyone clear to say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Bring that motion here. Next is to approve denied license agreement for access to district property as presented, and it has been updated by our health. A legal, other way to make it all down.
I'll make a motion to approve the alternate authorizations, I mean, the licensing agreement for access to district property as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Motion in second, anyone clear to say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Bring that motion here. Next is to approve denied the alternate authorization to the dinner form 48-07, 28-20-20.
I just have a question on this one. So, our teacher is, doesn't have the ELA and drama endorsements? Because I'm not really sure what ELA, the ELA endorsement is.
Can I have HR Director Cunningham's on Zoom, so let's see if she can answer?
Okay.
If that's okay.
Hey Brooke, I unmuted you and I asked you to start your video. Trustee Thompson has a question regarding this alternate authorization. I don't know if you heard the question, though.
I did. So she actually, she saw all of her endorsements.
Oh, dear, yes, she is.
What was that? I'm sorry?
Hey, you're not unmuted, though. I don't hear you. Oh, that's on my end. Hold on.
Okay.
There you are.
And so she has all of her endorsements in the ELA. In a lot of states, you don't have to have a drama endorsement, the ELA is good enough. But in the state of Idaho, you have to actually have a drama endorsement. And so she's on an alternative route, she's doing what she needs to do to get that drama endorsement, and drama is a hard to fill position. So I do highly recommend that you guys...
Hope you froze on that.
I think she said that she highly recommends that you approve this alternate route so that you can get this additional endorsement, is what I think she said. But she doesn't. Yes. Yeah.
Thank you, Brooke. I appreciate the input.
I would move to approve the alternate authorization as presented for employee 07-28, 2020-8.
I'll second that. Motion in second, everyone clear to say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Bring that motion here. Next is to approve denied 20-20-21 classified employee list as presented. Questions?
I don't have any questions.
Someone why don't either?
I'll make a motion to approve the, excuse me, to approve the 20-20-20-21 classified employee list as presented.
I'll second that. Motion in second, everyone clear to say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Bring that motion here. Okay, next is the discussion items, first read for the updated policy 10-10, election, mention of the need to change the base or left in all elections.
Yes. In the high school graduation, we just slid through with Lisa Sexton to make sure that you, you know, we changed some language because it had changed in the adopter rule and needed to be, you know, it was the same thing, just update. And then we did come to an agreement with how many credits were needed, it's still two more than what minimum is required. And we also agreed that 3.1 GPA or 700P on that. Oh yes, we did add the...
Accompanying procedure. So the policy there is kind of simplified, the procedure expands on all the credits and all the requirements.
We have questions, though. I'll please to read through them before the next meeting, if there are questions, or make sure you reach out to Chrissy and make sure you address anything that could be fine. Okay, anything else on that?
Well, no, it's a, the board member input for future Uniteds.
Yeah, I would like to put out there in some review of job descriptions, I show the assistant superintendent supposed to be conducting exit interviews with certified personnel in their district. That's part of the responsibilities, performance responsibilities. And so what I'd like to find out is, I know I'm often asking when people are reading, they would do the exit interview, and it's like, "No, they didn't, they didn't want to do it, whatever." So I would really like to kind of talk about this, because I do think it would be beneficial for our district.
Yeah, we did start it based on your input.
It's like, as during?
No, no, we, we did. It's always an option, but then people weren't choosing to do it. So we had one employee, which I thought would just be an identifier, I didn't think that was good to be sharing one. And so we, I had Brooke, a week or two ago, she sent out to every single employee that, whether they resigned, retired, or left, they, she sent them, and now she has several. So she's planning on presenting it as a together, so it's not, you know, people are doing this to not be identified, just to be able to get feedback. So she's going to present the whole thing to the board at the second meeting in August. So we decided that maybe an annual thing, or maybe, because mostly people leave at the end of the year. So she gave, sent it to everyone who left and gave them the option to do it, and then she'll put a report together for the board and she's going to present it to the board. Right now, we're just thinking annually in August, like before school starts in, because people, because that's typically when people leave at the end of the year or over the summer, they find something they're, and then she'll do that annually is, is what we're planning on now, unless the board changes their mind and wants it more than once a year.
So I understand that you're going to have Brooke take care of you.
Yeah, it should not be under the assistant superintendent. And I, just for clarification, when I came on as the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, Ms. Sexton would tell you that she was at her computer doing HR stuff most of the day. She was at her computer doing this for her, so she wasn't doing teaching and learning, which is why that job description needs to be properly updated.
Oh, yeah, no, that's fine. I just, I had seen it there and I thought, huh, and it was only for certified staff, it wasn't for any other type of staff. Which I personally think it should be all in person.
Of everyone.
And just help us understand what's going on.
Right, absolutely.
The only thing I had, so then, I have, I guess a couple of questions. Equipment, so our Zoom meetings can be better, I think we sort of went through the list last time. We know when that's gonna be here, or when we can implement something, or are we still working on that? I just don't...
Well, I presented it to the board only because, just for clarification, that kind of got brought up, and then I didn't realize that, you know, anybody had said anything about it. I did some follow-up, Chrissy and I did follow-up, and then we had Chad find middle of the road equipment so that it wasn't too expensive, but it wasn't just ignoring it, because I've had several patron feedback also saying they can't hear very well. So I sent the purchase order through, and I did talk to a few board members just about, like, my intention behind it was follow through so that people could hear better, and the board members I talked to were all great with that. So I put the purchase order through and it should be here any day now. Hopefully it'll be here by next 4B.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
My other question is, being that this seems to be what our norm, I'm gonna be saying nothing, I guess that's what it is right now. Is it possible, or do we need, and we need, I guess maybe have this discussion, if we need to move our meetings to some other facility that we own, so that we can have patrons inside, whether it's in a gym or, you know, I don't know if one of the junior highs are more electronically equipped, or if we can just show up, they have, I mean, I don't know what the accommodations are, but I just thought, if this is where we're gonna be stuck doing this, then I think we need to consider, at least have a discussion, moving to a gym or somewhere where we can allow thirty more people in, or something like that. So the public feels like they're not just stuck behind this screen, you know, and I'm sure that some of them aren't quite as technologically adapted as we are, so. That's all, at some point, you know, but...
Yeah, and I guess in kind of thinking about that, following up, when we have, you know, staff in there or whatever and they're all motioned here, there's no social distancing. And so I don't know that we're conveying the right message with the whole, "Yeah, social distance unless you're on the agenda." Then that's okay, you don't have to, but we're only letting people that are on the agenda for a specific presentation come to the board meeting. And I, I don't, I don't know that that, that's appropriate.
I agree.
I mean, I don't know. I just am kind of curious.
I just thought it would be good to have a discussion at some point, whether we can, you know, whenever it's going to become...
And, um, have all the repairs been done to the junior? That we're under the 450,000.
Yeah, we didn't expect, I'll let Mr. Ross.
There, I believe, I think the roof was almost buttoned up.
Okay.
With that done, we still have, uh, the contractor coming in doing the drywall, repair, interior, now that I won't be. Um, so there, I know that TO came through, and they're working on that. I don't think that's finished yet. Um, and that, I believe, is the last of the work. I'd have to.
Yeah, we're, we're not, we're not doing everything on the list, because we decided with the COVID that we weren't gonna finish some of the stuff, which the, um, on the initial list was the restrooms, and we decided not to upgrade the restrooms at this point. And we just didn't know financially where we're at with staffing and all the circumstances going on, so. The lands, um, yeah, we talked about it at one of the board meetings, the landscaping was done, and you can see landscaping out front. The doors have been painted and done. Almost all, every classroom whose teacher wanted it is going to be painted. Um, so those.
So, actually, in some ways, we did more. Um, the bathrooms, we didn't do what we did. Focus our paint crew, um, which is really three or four staff members that work over the summer, who don't, you know, have that summer assignment. And then during the last few years, they painted, I think, almost every room. The teacher said, this is where I want the accent wall, and we did that. So that work right now is what we're going on after they did the exterior doors, so.
I just remember when we did, um, the, the walk through, it's just, the ceiling was atrocious, and the holes, and the, I just want to make sure.
Well, correct. Where the water damage was, and they had some of those, those areas are gonna be repaired.
Okay.
Um, we still might have some ceiling tiles that, you know, have the yellow stains when that happens, and all those may not be replaced, but the big areas where the drywall's damaged, and some of that, and had plastic, yeah, that's what we actually have a contractor coming in finishing out.
And that will be done in the course of this.
Yes.
If we can't replace the tile, can we paint the white, bring cover up this stain?
Usually you replace, we can actually get the, um, you know, buy replacing tiles, and we do, we have some on stock, it's just going through and doing some of that, of divorce to divorce. We would start going around, I could have Mr. Perry able to order those and do that, and that can happen during the school year, obviously, just putting those up and reattaching.
Yeah.
You know, it's not difficult, just, you know, custodians could do that under there, so we can start looking at that.
This is gonna be good for morale after, but they could still come back to you.
Yeah, they, they, they all got to put their, um, order preference on the paint, paint color, so that every teacher there feels like they have a choice in something, and it is helping, you know, morale, for sure. And then, like, the new painted Lakewood green doors externally, that helps as well, too, and the landscaping out front.
We did remove doors, too. Like, the jams, were they?
No.
We didn't, we didn't replace doors.
We did replace the doors.
There's a couple that we probably will start looking at, and we'll have dollars in the plant, some of that, but especially the exterior doors on this side, on the west side of the building, there's a couple that are. I mean, they, they sort of, you know, manufactured, you know, brackets in-house and welded and stuff like that. We're just getting to the point that we can't weld so much, I wasn't sure. Right.
Yeah, we decided to wait, we decided to wait one more year.
So.
Because we just didn't know, I, I just were, like, we just didn't know where the staffing and the where this COVID thing, and we didn't know how much care's money we were gonna get, we just tried to err on what could we get the most bang for our buck initially, and then if we want to do additional things, because the board had said up to 450,000, but we had to do everything on the list.
And I'll, I'll tell you, that having that roof and doing that work, and that twenty year warranty, um, I mean, that's really huge. I mean, the very first thing you need to do for these buildings is, is prevent water intrusion. And there had been patch work done there, but it was a patch, and even if you do that on your house, sometimes a patch doesn't hold, and these bigger industrial gross, so, I mean, that, and literally putting several hundred thousand dollars in for that project is, is money most spent, yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.